We're live. All right, I want to call the Finance and Law Subcommittee meeting to order. It's Wednesday, October 7th, 2020. Mr. Souza.
Present.
Mr. Fiore.
Present.
Also in attendance, we have Superintendent Cabral and Assistant Superintendent Monahan. First item on the agenda tonight is bills payable. So we have a little leftover from FY20 to the tune of $960. And FY21, we have $854,318.57. Any questions from my colleagues on those two items?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Souza.
Thank you. Ms. Monahan, page four, Flag House, down at the bottom. Doesn't sound familiar, but that doesn't mean I don't remember.
That is a vendor that we use our therapy supplies for our special ed students.
That's what I thought. It's coming out of special ed and it's a special ed account. So it's coming out of grant, I'm sorry. Okay.
And if I can just have your attention on that too, at the last page of the warrant, you will see the breakdown of each of the of the account numbers. And as you can see, just about over half of this warrant is going and being paid by federal grants.
That's always a good thing. Mr. Chairman, I'll motion to approve the warrant as a total of $855,278.57.
I'll second that.
Motion's made and seconded. Any more discussion? Seeing none or hearing none? Roll call, Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Fiore.
Yes.
Mr. Martin votes yes. Second item on the agenda this evening is our budget update. We have three items under this category. FY21, quarter one, revolving quarter one, and grants quarter one. So is Ms. Monahan going to handle that or Mr. Cabral?
Be happy to handle it if that's okay, Superintendent Cabral.
Yeah, these are your documents.
Okay, just wanting to make sure. Thank you. Just to look at the first quarter for FY21. As you can see, I'll do just a quick overview. Right now, we have expended just a little bit over 8.5% of our budget. Now again, the things that I just want to bring into your attention is of course, we're not paying we weren't paying transportation for the first 10 days of school as we had, those were PD days. And right now, the only transportation that we are paying is for the services rendered, which is our special education students and our high needs students. So currently, as you can see, we're just about at where we should be at this time as it's a quarter, very some of them under and some a little bit higher. And one of the highest ones is our technology. And the reason why, of course, is as you know, we are putting together the enormous amounts of technology that is needed for our hybrid and also for our in-person and remote learning. Any questions on the quarter one budget?
Follow up on that? I just have one question. I noticed the appropriation for our maintenance of buildings is nothing, zero.
One of the things that-
Does that mean if we have a problem in one of our buildings, the building department is going to take care of it?
Oh, I don't think so. But what I can remind you, Mr. Martin, is that some of the line items that we appropriated for were zero because those were line items that we had said that CARES Act and other acts would be would be able to pay up for those line items to balance our budget.
So is this CARES Act going to last forever?
Oh, we would be hopeful. But again, we are watching them very carefully as we go ahead. We have multiple grants. And now I will go over those in the next one when we go through the grants I will review.
Okay, I'm just concerned that if we have a major problem in one of the buildings, that it gets taken care of before we lose part of a building.
Yeah, and Mr. Martin, I mean, obviously, if something does happen in one of our buildings and we need to expend money that's not appropriated to that line, we will. And as we do in the future, or maybe around quarter three, when we present quarter three, we always ask for the ability to be able to move unexpended funds around to offset deficits in other lines. So if work needs to be done in our schools, we'll have it done. If we can charge it to the CARES grant, we will. CARES grant, we are allowed to expend or carry through September 2022. So we will have, I'm sorry, September 2021, we will have the CARES grant into next year. And if we can charge it there, we will. And again, if we need to run that line in a deficit and then make a transfer off another line with a surplus, we will to balance it out.
I know we keep hearing that, you know, our buildings are fairly new, which they are, but you know, East Taunton Elementary may look fairly new, but it's 33 years old. And heating systems, things like that don't last forever. And I would hate to see, you know, some major problem within that building and, you know, I know we'll take money out of another account to fix it, but you know, it is the building department's responsibility to maintain our buildings. Our custodians are to clean the buildings, the building department is to maintain them. So we're always getting beat up that we got the best buildings in the city, but they are getting old.
Well, I also remind, I'll also remind, I don't need to remind this group, I guess I'll complement this group. This group has always had the vision or the foresight to invest in preventative maintenance. Now, so whether it's painting doorways that are starting to rust, replacing items that are broken, doing maintenance on our new tennis courts to make sure that the cracks that start creeping up are replaced. I mean, this committee has always had the vision to maintain the facilities that we have over the last 10 to 15 years. And I think that's why you're seeing the facilities in the condition that they are, because we do, you know, provide the support when the building department can't, even though, as you know, said very nicely, Mr. Martin, you know, it is a responsibility of the building department, but we're good neighbors and we do try to partner with them when we can.
Well, hopefully, the feeling is mutual. We're good neighbors. Hopefully, we get some reciprocation on that too. Mr. Souza.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one question on this, on the technology line, obviously, we've expended just about the whole budget. So as we move forward, we're going to charge some, obviously, we're still going to need technology. So we're going to charge that against CARES and other funding?
Yes, that is right. Some of that will happen to other funding sources like the grants. And also, like Mr. Cabral did say, if we do go over on some lines around quarter three, we then go ahead and ask the school committee for permission to balance our budget. But we've been working very closely with the Director of Technology to identify the correct technology that is needed as we are heading into hybrid. And we think we're pretty well ready to go.
Yeah, this is a fluid situation. This year is, as they say, totally different than we've ever seen before. So I think this is going to be a fluid situation. We're going to have some lines expended totally, some lines not expended. So I think as we get into third quarter, then we start adjusting from there. But I totally understand that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Also, Mr. Cabral, could you mention, I think the public should realize this or know this, that the TMLP is upping our, what, gigabytes or whatever you call it, for internet access?
Yeah, I was going to give a little update during my super report, but-
All right, you can do it then. You can do it then, because more people will be listening to the regular meeting.
Yeah, but just so this group knows too, we're going to go from one gig to 10 gig. And that's going, that should be taking place this week. The pots are in, we just need to have them installed.
So the reception on these computers that are being used by everybody in the school department will notice the difference, hopefully. They'll get a stronger signal.
Yeah, 10 gig, 10 gig would allow, 10 gig would allow every student to, under normal conditions, 10 gig would allow every student to attend in person with their device to be streaming at the same time with the teachers. So that's how much 10 gig will give us. So when we go hybrid and half the population is in, it should give us plenty of bandwidth to support our hybrid remote online learning.
Now, is this a modification to our contract with the TMLP?
It's a slight modification to our contract. I believe we're going to, I mean, to believe it or not, to go from one to 10 gig, just pretty much doubles our bandwidth cost for the TMLP, which I was surprised to learn that it wasn't as expensive as we first thought.
And if I could say, Mr. Cabral, too, that our Director of Technology, Carolyn Bleno, E-Rate has opened up for, that we can go ahead and reapply for services of increases in bandwidth as they're seeing that everybody across the country is in need of this as well. So we'll be able to go ahead, if approved, we'll be able to go ahead and reap the benefits of getting reimbursed by E-Rate.
Very good. Second item on the budget discussion, revolving quarter one.
So if you look at our revolving account, right now, we have revenue of $3.8 million. And if I could bring your attention to the expense line under School Choice for $264,000, that line is really mostly for our PPE and other items that we purchased in the amount of days, excuse me, the days and months of closure from March until June. So what happened was we worked with the city and the city went ahead. And this is before we got the CARES grant. And the city has allowed us to submit any of those items that we needed to work remotely and of course, keep our staff safe, those in the building. So any of those supplies that we purchased, which was 200 and just over $260,000, we have submitted that to TIMA, and TIMA has now submitted that to FEMA. And we are hoping to be reimbursed fully of that amount of money. I don't see it to be a problem as we did follow the guidelines and we should be able to recoup all of that money and put it back into revolving under the School Choice line.
So, Mr. Chairman, if that's the case, do we have a timeframe on that, Ms. Monahan, on the, maybe talk to Rick and find out what the potential reimbursement timeframe is?
We did, we had a City Hall update today, and Rick did, Rick Ferrera from TIMA, did go ahead and say that he has submitted everything with all our backups for us, of course, the school department and throughout the city. And he's hoping to hear, really don't know, because of course, as you're talking about, there's many other counties going ahead and municipalities going ahead in submitting that. We're hoping, because they just submitted or opened up CARES number two for the city side. So I'm thinking that they will hopefully be submitting the monies to the cities very soon because they're opening up another pocket of money.
Hopefully this fiscal year.
Yeah.
I would-
I'll say this fiscal year.
I would watch that very carefully because I'm sure that reimbursement is going to come in the form of a transfer
Right.
in one, in one sum of money.
Yeah, we got to hope-
We need to make sure we get our piece of that sum of money.
And hope these hard things stop hitting before we get our money.
And that's the reason why we did hit the School Choice, so we knew exactly where we charged it all. And we have been watching it. And the city has been a great partner to us. Once they do receive a wire of money and they do ask all departments saying, does this pertain to you? So, but yes, our girls are very good in that office that will go ahead and continue monitoring that with City Hall.
Any other questions on quarter one of the revolving account? It's good to see that the lower right-hand corner is hefty as it is, because we still don't know what's going to be facing down the road. Thank you. The last report is the grants report, quarter one.
Right now, for grants, we have a total of just over $10 million in grants funding. $1.4 million must be spent by this end of the fiscal year of FY20. We have been working with the grant managers, who are the people that managing their grants, to make sure that they are expending all their monies that is allowable expenses in each of the grants. If you look at the bottom, towards the bottom of the report, where you will see the FY21 grants, the ones that have been considered to be like a CARES grant or something to do with the pandemic. The first one is, it's called the ESER, and it's known as a CARES grant. That one, that is the one that we've been able to start using. And as Mr. Cabral said, we can carry those funds through June of 2021. And we've been awarded $1.2 million in the Remote Learning Grant by, that was going to fund any of the technology that is going to be allowable expenses to help us get ready for technology differently and of course, remote. And that had to be put forth in a plan, and that was $640,000 worth of technology. And then the CVRF Schools Reopening Grant, where we received $225 per student. And that's where we received the $1.8 million of additional funding for helping the district amongst the pandemic. So as you can see, right now, again, we have to spend $1.4 million before the end of fiscal 20, fiscal 21. And totally right now, budgeted, we have over $10 million in grants. And of course, many of them are not going to be ending until 2021.
Any questions from my colleagues?
Well, just a question, Mr. Chairman, on the remote learning grant, that was a state grant? That was, that was-
It was, and that was the one that we really needed to be very careful on what we were, they wanted listing of exactly how much.
Narrow focus on one, yeah.
That was a, that grant too, was a competitive grant. So we'd be in, that would, that would fund up to 50% of the amount requested. And we got the full 50%.
Very nice.
Very good. A motion maybe to receive and place on file?
Some will move. Second.
All in favor, a roll call, Mr. Fiore.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Come on and vote yes. And finally, the third item on the agenda this evening is the facilities update.
Just a quick little update, Mr. Martin, thank you, is to, we just celebrated today National Custodians Day throughout the district, thanking our custodians. We want to also thank Bruce Thomas, who is a parent of a child here in Taunton, but also a Dunkin' Donuts owner, where he went ahead and contributed 50 bacon, egg, and cheese sandwiches for our custodians, which he made himself, and also $5 gift cards to each one of our custodians. So we went ahead and delivered those today to all of our custodians and thanked them very much for all of their hard work.
Who was that again?
His name is Bruce Thomas.
Bruce Thomas, okay.
Yeah.
Yes, and just as you know, we are getting ready for the reopening and beginning our hybrid plan where principals are getting their buildings ready by making sure that signs and hallway directionals, making sure that they have stickers on the floor or duct tape on the floor to make sure that we keep our students and staff safe and ready to go. Lastly, and I know I'm going quickly, but we are almost done with the Taunton Alternative High School Group project. I will be meeting on Thursday with our project manager. Well, I will be reviewing the final documents to be submitted to the MSBA. And that is the facilities report.
Thank you very much. Any further items for the Finance and Law Subcommittee this evening?
Motion adjourned.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded, Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Fiore.
Yes.
Mr. Martin votes yes. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. I'll call the Wednesday, October 7th, School Committee to order. Mrs. Fagan, please call the roll.
Yes. Ms. Doherty?
Present.
Mr. Palowski?
Present.
Mr. Fiore?
Present.
Mrs. Fagan's present. Mr. Martin?
Present.
Mrs. Almeida? Mr. DeMello?
Present.
Mr. Souza?
Present.
And Mayor O'Connell is not going to be attending tonight either, right?
Right.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Fagan.
I'll do the prayer. Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for the opportunity to be of service to our community and to the young people entrusted to our care. I would also respectfully ask that we have a moment of silence for Mrs. Ann Texera, wife of Edmund Texera, a former member of the school committee, in her own right, raised a family of six children, and then went on and got her degree in education, became an outstanding teacher, who really advanced the idea of reading for students. So she was a real proponent of having students enjoy reading. So our prayers are with her family. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan.
Welcome.
Moving on, we're going to move on to the approval of the minute, September 16, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
I hear a, I hear a motion in the second on a roll call vote, Mrs. Fagan.
Ms. Doherty?
Present. Oh, excuse me, yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Present.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Almeida? Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes. Moving on, a Student Council Representative report. Mr. Cabral, we're going to have a Student Council Representative come on anytime soon, or are we going to forego that for right now?
We were told that a Student Council rep would be attending, and we sent the invitation to the Student Council rep. Is the Student Council rep in the waiting room, Mr. Jakes? No? Well, it appears like the Student Council rep is not attending after all, so I apologize.
So that's, it's good news, though, that we have it, we have, it's in the, in the plan. So that's good, that's good news. And hopefully, the next meeting, we'll see he or she. Thank you. It'll be a she?
Yes.
Excellent. Moving on to public input, let me just read the disclaimer here. This is October, the, excuse me, the October 7th School Committee meeting pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass. General law, section 30A18, and the Governor's March 50, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Taunton School Committee is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of the members of the public will be permitted. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, this public hearing is being held remotely with no physical meeting location. Those seeking to provide public input should do so by using the following methods. The meeting will be aired on the Taunton Educational Network, Comcast Channel 9, Verizon Channel 23 in Taunton. The meeting can also be viewed via live stream at https://thstvstudio.vod.castus.tv. And that is also on the website for anybody that misses that. A recording of the meeting will be made available on the aforementioned THS TV Studio Tactis website, as well as the Taunton Educational Network YouTube channel at http://www.youtube.com/forward slash www.youtube.com/forward slash C/THSTVStudio. Just, it's also will be rebroadcast multiple times on the Taunton Educational Network cable channel. Telephone input during the meeting, and then the telephone number has been flashing on your screen, and that would be 508-821-1221, 508-821-1221. Leave a message if necessary, and include your name and number and your address for the record. Meeting will, this meeting will be recorded and posted on the Taunton Public Schools website at www.tautonschools.org. Mr. Cabral, I'm not sure who's manning the phones. First of all, do we have any email in public input?
So moving forward, as long as we're in remote setting for our meetings, Mr. Verata will read any written or emails that were sent for public input, and Mrs. Monahan will handle any phone calls that are submitted for public or that are called in for public input.
Excellent. Mr. Verata, do we have any written public input?
Yes, we do. We have one email that came in this afternoon. It's from Ms. Paula Gentile from 14 Rowley Ave, East Taunton. My name is Paula Gentile. My son is a repeat kindergarten student at East Taunton Elementary. He is a special needs student. His PL3 form says he is a moderate risk with 22 hours of special needs services in his six-day cycle out of a 36 hours in school. He is at 61%. In order to be considered high risk, he would need to have 75%. I recalled my son's IEP team at a meeting yesterday. The team all agreed my son is unable to do remote learning due to his disability, which consists of huge behavioral issues while doing remote learning. The teachers and therapists told me the team, they are lucky to get three to five minutes of work out of him, even though the team agreed the special ed office was adamant about not giving him four days a week. My son does great in person and has never showed any behaviors at school. My son is unable to receive his IEP services, but apparently, that's not a concern of theirs. I even asked to just come in for services on his days opposite his cohort, but was told that's not an option. There are other children in the cohort C who are in inclusion who are four days. They will be with their class all four days when school returns, even though technically, it is two cohorts. So I'm not asking for something that isn't already being done. My son needs four days in school to access his services on his IEP, but the SPED ed, Special Ed Office only will use strictly the PL3 form. I am begging the school committee and the administration to make exceptions for these kids. There are exceptions to every rule, and this needs to be taken into consideration. Using the PL3 form was not the only guidance that DESI put out. One of them to be considered high needs for in-person learning was children who cannot engage in remote learning, but Taunton chose to not take any of this, any of this group. My son is counting on you to hold them accountable. Thanks for your time. Again, Paula Gentile, 14 Rowley Ave, East Taunton. And that's the only written submission, Mr. Cabral.
And just so everyone knows that's listening, it's the policy, the school committee does not respond. We'll refer all public input to the administration, and they will get back to each individual public input person. Thank you. And now we'll move on to telephone, live telephone calls. Ms. Monahan?
Thank you very much, Mr. Souza. I have one call, and it is, I have her on speakerphone, so go ahead.
Let her, let her know there's no more than five minutes, please.
I have already, so please go ahead and state your name and your address, and you have less than, you have about five minutes.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Amy Higginbotham, and I live at 74 Bluegrass Circle in Taunton. I'm calling tonight to express my frustration with the lack of transparency with the timeline from the district and Superintendent Mr. Cabral about going into a hybrid model. I'm a parent of two elementary children and a teacher in a different district, and I find the lack of communication regarding this appalling. Guidelines were set by the Department of Education on June 25th to wait until last week to even hear the timeline is simply pretty disorganized. This summer, I spent June through the beginning of August on the Educational Task Force with Assistant Superintendent Mr. Verata, specifically because of my prior knowledge of remote learning. The meetings were focused on the hybrid model. I shared documents that were, I thought helpful and wanted to help more, but all of a sudden, they stopped after the announcement was made that remote learning was going to happen at the beginning. There was no, quiet, sorry. There was no communication why they stopped. That felt weird and frankly, icky because there was a lot more work to do. In a school committee meeting in late August, I clearly remember Mayor O'Connell even asking why the students couldn't go into school now since the COVID numbers supported this. Mr. Cabral's response was that he wanted for everyone to feel comfortable, quote. To me, that is an unacceptable answer. No one in this pandemic is comfortable in any of these situations. For example, extended daycare had a summer program and now has a day program for school. How can daycare operate, charge families money, but school cannot? Although I feel was a good intention to have this available to families, it is highly inequitable. How can you justify this and not have hybrid learning? Many parents are asking this. When speaking to teachers in the district, many are saying that the reason is the teachers' union. That is the cause because of hybrid negotiations that are still happening. I personally don't know if this is the case, but if it is, I'm not quite sure why. Seems like many other districts have figured it out, including ones that are a lot like ours. In my opinion, both negotiations should have been completed by the beginning of school. It is my understanding that Mr. Cabral should be the highest advocate for our students, and the teachers' union protects the teachers. But it feels like this is all about the teachers' needs and concerns, and students are being looked at secondary. My children's teachers are doing great. They are working hard, trying to engage all students and have been in open communication with families. But the district is making it hard on them. I'm not quite sure if anyone has done a Google Meet. It's like Zoom, but very poor quality. It is fuzzy, echoey, and just plain awful. There is a reason why all of these official meetings are on Zoom. It is extremely hard to learn on a Google Meet. You can simply ask anyone. Zoom is safe. I've been doing it since March in Boston Public Schools. Other school districts also, also use it as a platform. So I'm asking the school committee to please consider buying Zoom for the teachers for the remainder of the first stage of remote learning, and to use it again if we go remote or even with the hybrid learning. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Moynihan, is that the only one?
That is the only one.
Okay, I think she, she was probably four, four minutes or so. So I think other people have had, already had time to call in if they had time. So I think that we'll move on to the superintendent's report now. We'll close public input, move on to the superintendent's report. Mr. Cabral, just one disclaimer that we may lose internet. Some people may lose internet. There's a Bristol County, there's a severe thunderstorm warning right now. So I don't know what that's gonna play, we'll just play it by ear. Mr. Cabral?
Yeah, thank you, Mrs. Susan. That storm is over me right now. So if I lose you, I will log back in as soon as I can. So in your packet, you have a superintendent's report in which I talk about three topics, and there are three additional topics that I'd like to discuss under my superintendent's talking points. So the first item in the packet, so as part of our ongoing work to improve our practices and opportunities for our students, families, and staff, we are proud to announce that the Taunton Public Schools will be creating a social justice advisory committee.
Excuse me, Mr. Cabral?
Yes.
I have Mrs. Almeida on the line. She can't get on this meeting. She needs the meeting ID number. I can't get it on my computer.
I'll put myself on mute and call, unless you're, you're gonna do it, Jaxie?
I'll take care of it.
Thank you.
Yeah, gonna have to give her call. I'm sorry, John, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
So the Taunton Public Schools is no stranger to this work around social justice, as this work has been ongoing for several years, thanks mainly to the commitment of our staff. In the past, Taunton Public Schools has offered professional development on this very important topic, topics, as part of our term-time professional development offerings available for interested staff to attend at the school. Most recently, the Taunton Public Schools has sponsored several social justice forums, which have all been well-attended. Also, Taunton Public Schools has collaborated with neighboring educational institutions and businesses such as Bridgewater State University, Bristol Community College, and the New Bedford Public Schools, and as well as the Bristol County Savings Bank. And most recently, we have also partnered with True Diversity, who have attended several meetings with me and Mrs. Perry to help form a very strong partnership. So ideally, the social justice committee will be made up of one representative from each school, members of the Taunton Public School Leadership Team, as well as community partners. I believe it's important for the school committee to have a voice, and I encourage the committee to nominate a member of the board to serve on the advisory committee and an alternate, in a similar fashion to what we've done with the building committee for the Mulcahy Construction Project. The social justice advisory committee's purpose will be to identify and plan meaningful professional development for our students and staff. Initially, help with the creation and development of building-level workshops and events at our schools. In addition, discuss practices and structures that may currently exist that create imbalances throughout the district. Taunton Public Schools has never shied away from this work or from hard work, and we have a strong track record of providing opportunities for all our students. As we continue to grow and evolve as a community and as a district, we must continue to adjust our practices to provide our students with opportunities to access the many offerings available to them while preparing our students to become contributing members of our ever-shrinking global society.
Mr. Cabral, I'd like to interrupt, but did you want, did you want us to take, ask for school committee representative volunteers now, or do you want to do it at the end?
I'm open to either or. If someone would like to nominate, or someone would like to...
If there's any, any, any committee member that would like to, would like to serve on that committee in an alternate, we can have a primary member and an alternate, Mrs. Almeida?
Yeah, I'd like to serve on it. I've gone to some of the meetings already.
Okay. Mrs. Almeida would like to serve on it. Ms. Doherty?
I have a question, a couple of questions before we move back to who wants to serve. I'm interested in, I know you mentioned the True Diversity Group. There's another group representing the diversity in the community called the Taunton Diversity Network. I think that you should add them to the list of people who would participate in the advisory committee, and I notice, and it's perhaps in your thinking, Mr. Cabral, but that's while we're talking about professional development and other opportunities for students, students are not listed in the list of participants in the advisory committee. And I think that we would be well-served to hear the voice of students as well in terms of what is in their best interest, as well as the adults in the environment. Thank you, Mr. Souza.
You're welcome, Ms. Doherty. He'll take that under advisement. So Mrs. Almeida would like to serve as the primary. Do we have an alternate? Anyone would like to serve as an alternate?
Can I ask a question, Mr.?
Yes.
This is the same group, Mr. Cabral, that Dr. Butts is running, right?
No.
No.
No, this, this, those are the, I believe Dr. Butts is running a book club, and Dr. Butts and I, with other members in the Taunton Public Schools, have organized social justice forums. So this would, this would be different. This would be more of an advisory committee that would, you know, talk about what is needed in the school system for our students and for our staff, and opportunities for professional development.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, this has to do with, directly with advising the school, the school administration. So the chair would like to take a motion to appoint or have Mrs. Mrs. Almeida serve on our behalf?
So moved.
Wait, here a second. Mr. Mr. Fio, thank you, Mrs. Fagan. I think I had two seconds. All those in favor, a roll call, Mrs. Fagan.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Keep forgetting. Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Which one? Which one? He's on here twice.
He's on there double.
I think he's having, he's in that problems.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
And Mr. Souza?
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Fagan.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mrs. DeMello.
I'd like to nominate Jordan Fiore as the alternate, if you would be willing to accept.
Would you accept, Mr. Fiore?
Yes, I'd put my hand up, you didn't catch me before.
I didn't catch you, I apologize. Thank you, Mrs. DeMello, for catching that. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. On the, on the motion to adopt, excuse me, appoint Mr. Fiore to the advisory committee as an alternate, on a roll call vote, Mrs. Fagan, please.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski? Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
And Mr. Souza?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. I'm sorry, Ms. Doherty?
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we add the Taunton Diversity Network to the list of participants in the advisory committee or council, and...
I, the chair, the chair will, the chair is going to say that this, 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 this committee is appointed by Mr. Cabral. The only people on this committee, the only reason I asked the committee to appoint one or two members of their own is because Mr. Cabral asked for those two members. As far as the other people serving, that would be up to the superintendent.
If I might...
There's a motion on the floor. I second the motion.
I'd like to add students as well to this group. I'm, I know that that's probably Mr. Cabral's intention. I think that this is just a short list for conversation, but I'd like to be on the record as having those two entities and others participating, because everything is under school committee activity.
So there's a, there's a, there's a, I'm sorry, Mrs. DeMello, I didn't hear your second. I apologize.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
I didn't hear, I just didn't hear you at the second. That's why I didn't realize there was a motion on the floor.
On discussion?
Yeah, on discussion, just let me, before I turn it to the members, Mr. Cabral, is this committee has to do with your advisory committee for you, as far as the administration goes? I didn't, I didn't think we were adding people on from other areas.
Sorry, it's just, it was hard to, too many mics were open, and I was having a hard time hearing, especially with the storm.
Put themselves on mute, please.
So what I, what I will say is, again, I've served on a few committees, and what I've always noticed is that committees are organic, that they evolve, that they grow. So if there's, in, I'm thinking about some of the community committees that I've served on, and we've added people over time. So student voice is important. If there's another group that needs to be represented, I'm not opposed to having representation from other groups, because we're all serving the same purpose. And the purpose is to advise me on how to make our district more inclusive of everyone. So again, if it means having more individual, more representation, I'm fine. Again, the message is to help advise me, our principals, our school committee, on how to make sure that we are doing the work that is essential for our students.
Thank you. Before I turn, before I take questions, I see Mr. Martin's hand up. Please, everyone else, put your mic on mute. I see, I see a lot of mics still open, so please put them on mute. I'm gonna go with Mrs. Almeida, then Mr. Martin.
Thank you. I'm not too familiar with the organization that Mrs. Doherty was referring to. Is that the one that the mayor has the group with?
If I, my, Mr. Chair, no. The mayor's group is advising the mayor, I imagine, and it's called Unite. So it, while the work probably overlaps in the end, all of us moving in the same direction in terms of supporting greater diversity and collaboration across our community, and to address some of the issues around institutional racism and other kinds of issues in that regard. I think ultimately, we're all going to be in the same place, making it a better community for all of us, adults and students as well. So I think that the broader the group, the, the more rich the participation and the input.
Right, but where does this come from? What I want to know is, where is this group now?
Well, the Taunton Diversity Network actually was the first group of people that came together after the murder of George Floyd to begin to address the issues of community diversity. And so they, they have, they marched and rallied, and they had a pretty significant-sized rally across, at, on the Green a month or so ago. And they, their effort is to have people complete the census, number one, and to register people to vote, number two, and other kinds of things. So it just seems to me that that perspective, and True Diversity is moving in that direction as well. Just two different organizations.
Thank you for the explanation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Almeida. Mr. Martin?
Would it make more sense, Mr. Doherty, if you just changed your motion to request that the superintendent add those two groups to the organization that he's put together? It's, it's, it sounds like he's agreeable to it, but I think this motion would be a lot more amendable to people if you just said, if you were to request that the superintendent, rather, it's almost something like a command. You're, you know, you're telling him to add them. I would feel better if you said, I request that you add these two groups.
Sure, Mr. Martin, that's a friendly kind of addition to the motion, and I certainly would accept that, Mr. Souza.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Doherty.
I could, if I could, if I could bring some closure to this. So we actually have True Diversity, Taunton Diversity Network, sorry, is already represented, because we have twice, in the sense that we have April Cabrera from the district attorney's office, who also serves Taunton Diversity, was gonna be part of the group. So it was already covered. I didn't realize she also was on the Taunton Diversity Network. I thought she was representing the DA's office.
Yes, she is the president of the Taunton Diversity Network. True Diversity and Taunton Diversity Network are two different organizations. Tanya Lobo has created, I think, and headed up the first. April is the president.
Yep. So we, we will be well-represented.
For collaborative as well. Thank you.
Thank you. So Wendy, that would be, just change that to request. Okay, the motion, everyone, everyone okay with the motion? As far as the wording goes, we'll take a vote. Mrs. Fagan? Oh, sorry, Mr. Mr. Palowski, you'll be next.
Mr. Palowski and me.
You, Mrs. Fagan.
Yeah, I, you know, I understood that this was something that Mr. Cabral wanted to do with the school district, so I'm not gonna be voting in favor of that. I think if he can expand it after, but I think I'd like to let him go and see what happens in the school district before he's, he's obligated to do that. I mean, I had a long talk with him about it today, so I'll be voting no on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan. Mr. Palowski?
Yeah, I apologize. I had some technical difficulties, so if you wouldn't mind repeating the motion?
Yes, not a problem. We figured that we're probably all gonna have those before the night's over. Wendy? Repeat the motion, please? Oh, 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 you're on mute. All right. I'll have Ms. Doherty do it. Ms. Doherty, can you remember?
Yeah. The comment, Mr. Mr. Cabral just said that, I'm sorry to prolong this, but he did just say that April Cabrera is also, has also been in the conversations with him in this regard. April represents the Taunton Network. Everything that you mentioned that earlier, there would be no need for the motion. So they are already involved, and just say that I want students to participate.
Are you with, are...
So the motion should be to invite students to participate in the advisory group.
Does everyone understand that? So the motion would just be to ask, request the superintendent to have students involved.
Second.
All right. On the motion, Mrs. Fagan, please call the roll.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes no. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
DeMello?
Yes.
And Mr. Souza?
Yes. Mr. Mr. Cabral, continue on with the superintendent's report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Souza. So on page two, I provide you with the summary of where we stand for fiscal '21, and I also provide you with a brief summary on how we close out fiscal '20. So the financial outlook of fiscal '20 run remains unclear as our state continues to operate under a 112 budget. As we have discussed throughout the pandemic, we have been asked to reduce our budget due to uncertain revenue projections, which has impacted Chapter 70. Chapter 70 accounts for approximately 65% of our foundation budget. The remaining 35% is comprised of local or required local contribution. Similar to many school systems throughout the Commonwealth, the Taunton Public Schools has purchased personal protective equipment, PPE, for our schools as we prepare to return students and staff in a controlled manner. In addition to purchasing PPE, we have also been asked to prepare to deliver education remotely and in person. Over 8,000 Chromebooks were distributed to our students to meet this challenge, and over 500 laptops were distributed to staff charged with delivering instruction. In addition, online curriculum resources and technology were secured to support our staff, again, all of which warrants resources to ensure our students and staff are safe while also delivering engaging instruction aligned to the Massachusetts standards. While critical information from the federal government is still needed to finalize a full fiscal year budget for the Commonwealth, the Baker-Poleer Administration and the legislature have committed to funding districts no less than FY20 level of funding for Chapter 70 education as a baseline amount for FY21. So this funding commitment includes Chapter 70 increases for inflation in enrollment. So we received a Chapter 70 that was based on the inflation factor and also based on the increase in our enrollment. So that provided the state with an additional, an additional $107 million in aid or 2.1% over the amount that was budgeted for FY20. So unfortunately, the FY20 budget was created before the release of this information. However, the City of Taunton has committed to providing the Taunton Public Schools with an FY21 appropriation equal to fiscal '20, plus any additional increase to Chapter 70. So again, last year's appropriation plus the Chapter 70 increase for fiscal '21. Currently, our Chapter 70 increase stands at two or just under $2.2 million. So we're gonna receive in Chapter 70, as of now, $2,164,353. When we combined, when we, when combined with this funding, with the funding already allocated to the Taunton Public Schools, so our appropriation, back when we formed our budget, was $88,249,792, plus the additional 2.1. We will have an FY21 appropriation of $90,414,145. So that would put net school spending at 103%. So prior to this funding, or prior to the Chapter 70 amount, we were at 101. So the additional $2.1 million raises the required net school spending to 103%. So the additional $2.1 million raises the required net school spending to 103%. So again, that is Chapter 78 that will be coming to the city, which we have been told will be added to our appropriation of 88 million. So I also want to remind the group that there is still ongoing deliberation on Beacon Hill regarding how and if the Student Opportunity Act can be funded. So the Taunton Public Schools, we use the conservative revenue total of $4.6 million. So that brings our total approved expenditures to just over $95 million for fiscal 21. Last year, fiscal 20, we were just over $96 million, so we are still under what we spent last year. It is important to reiterate, we are using conservative revenue figures as the final circuit breaker figure has yet to be finalized. You will also recall that the SOA, subject to appropriation, called for districts to be reimbursed by the state for a percentage of our out-of-district transportation to collaboratives. So again, that is still something that we may receive funding for that would increase our revenue. These are all factors that could increase our projected FY21 revenue. So despite a tumultuous ending to the fiscal 20, the district closed the fiscal year with greater revenue than first anticipated. The Taunton Public Schools ended fiscal 20 with a revenue surplus of $418,000, which will be carried over to fiscal 21 in the form of circuit breaker carryover. These funds will be used to offset FY21 out-of-district tuition costs, which is an allowable expense on the Massachusetts general law. In addition, we were able to use our revolving. So in addition, we were able to minimize the use of our revolving funds. So FY20, we have a revolving balance, so we ended with a revolving account balance of $3.8 million. Typically, we carry a balance of about $3 million. So we have an additional $800,000 in our revolving account that we can use to offset any deficits in fiscal 22. So again, I wanted to provide you with a snapshot of where we are for fiscal 21, how we closed fiscal 20, and also let you know there's still much uncertainty regarding fiscal 22. So this will be a very, very tight fiscal 21. And I provided you with the source of this information.
Mr. Martin?
What are we doing about busing as far as negotiating the total cost?
So, that's a great question. So again, we are currently paying for services rendered. So services that are rendered is what the, are the services that we are paying for our special advance and our buses that are being utilized. We have been asked, we've been asked on the days that buses are not running to follow the same contract, the memory and the agreement that we had back in the spring, which was to pay for 30% of the costs.
We've been asked by who?
H and L Bloom.
So is that something that the five districts that are represented by that company are in agreement with? Or are they looking for a better figure?
That is not something this time around that is being negotiated by the five districts. As I learned from the spring, not every district honored the agreement that we came up with altogether. So that is why I have held firm, again, based on the wishes of this committee, I have held firm that we will pay for services rendered, knowing that we paid the 30% last year, that we were asked to, to make sure that Bloom was viable for the start of the year.
Okay, I just don't want us to wait until May or June to figure out, you know, a figure that's agreeable to both sides because by then it's, we don't have a lot of bargaining time because the year is coming to a close. So I'd, I'd rather see us come up with an agreement sooner than later based on what you're saying, for services rendered. So if we don't, services aren't rendered, then there should be some kind of a refund for the, towards, toward the total cost of the contract. And I think that, and I think that should be known upfront because even if we go with hybrid for the rest of the school year, there's gonna be one day of the year that we're not using the buses, one day a week, excuse me.
Correct.
So that's, you know, 36 weeks of school, that's 36 days right there.
So if, if the committee would like me to, again, continue to negotiate and come back with a percentage that I feel is fair and reasonable, I will bring it to the committee before signing any contract and have our legal team review it. If the committee would like me to continue moving along and paying for services rendered, we will continue along and paying for services rendered.
Well, I would think, and again, I can't speak for the rest of the committee, but I would think that if you're gonna negotiate a price that's agreeable to both sides, then you have an attorney, because I'm sure they will. Thank you.
I, just as a, as a chair, Mr. DeMello, you'll be next. I just want to interject that I think services rendered is reasonable. If we start having a full discussion on strategy of terms of a legal negotiation or as a memorandum of agreement with the, Bloom will have to hold that in the executive session. I just don't want to give out too much of our strategy here at a public meeting. That would be my only concern. Mr. DeMello, go ahead. You're next.
Thank you, Chairman. So as my colleague, Mr. Martin, just mentioned, I was under, under the understanding that we were starting the school year with a opening date of September 14th and that we were only paying for services rendered. And furthermore, I, I'm still understanding that we haven't really concluded that $1.8 or $2 million that the Bloom Company received and that we paid 30%. Is that been finalized? Let's take, let's break this down. So let's go back to FY20. Has the conclusion been made that we're not getting any money back from the 30% that we paid additional of what we're, what we use for buses? That's number one.
Correct. There has not been, there's not been any movement regarding a reimbursement or a credit towards the 30% that we paid last year.
Okay, so I, I think we need to pursue that, continue to pursue that. I thought we were gonna get a monthly update on that. And secondly, as Mr. Martin just said, I mean, I'm, I'm on board to pay services rendered. I don't, I don't care, you know, what they think they're doing. I'm sorry. I mean, this, you know, we're hurting just as much as anybody else is hurting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeMello. Anyone else on that subject matter? Mr. Cabrera, continue on with your superintendent's report. Thank you.
I know Mr. Souza will speak more in depth about this, but I just wanted to, you know, make the committee aware that it's at that time of year again, believe it or not, even during COVID, where I am preparing the reflection for my self-evaluation. And so as I go through the DESI rubric for evaluating superintendents, I will be reflecting on the six standards, and I, I plan to have that reflection ready for you at the first meeting in November. And then obviously, we can follow the same process that we followed last year when my evaluation was conducted in public, which I know Mr. Souza will talk about it, and I'll just remind everyone that I believe I'm the, I think I'm the only TPS employee whose evaluation is done publicly. Everyone else's evaluation is done privately. So we'll just, we'll continue along that path, and I'll have that document ready for you in early November. Mr. Barata, before I left the office today, reminded me that we received a donation that I should have included in my report. So as you may be aware, on September 14th, the school committee, a member, Mr. DeMello, relayed to the district the desire of the Taunton-based Elks Lodge to donate 150 dictionaries to all the third grade students enrolled at the James L. Mokee Elementary School. So today, those dictionaries were delivered to the Mokee School, and those pictures should be up on, on our social media outlets shortly. It's not up there already. So in a subsequent, subsequent conversation or discussion with the Lodge Treasurer, Mr. James Stoney, Mr. Barata learned of their fundraising efforts that the members of the Lodge have undertook as a result of the ongoing COVID-19 crisis. As a result, Mr. Barata has expressed his deepest gratitude in accepting the donation of dictionaries. And furthermore, Mr. Stoney provided Mr. Barata with information regarding the Lodge's drug awareness poster contest and Americanism essay contest, which he will forward along to the curriculum supervisors and building administrators for the purpose of encouraging our students to be involved. So as for the dictionaries, they attended, they were delivered today in person by Mr. Stoney to Principal Decuta at the Mokee Elementary School. So we are thankful to the Lodge, we are thankful to Mr. Stoney, and I want to thank Mr. DeMello for helping to facilitate that conversation between Mr. Barata and Mr. Stoney. And then the two last talking points that I wanted to share was to kind of give the school committee maybe just a little insight onto how the hybrid planning and phase in is going, moving along. So the hybrid planning continues to move along. Again, we are being, you know, being, it's gonna be very heavy or very heavy on technology regarding how our platform will move forward. What we are hoping to accomplish and what we will accomplish will be for engagement throughout the week for our students. Unlike other hybrid programs and other communities where students are on for two days and then they're remote for the Wednesday remote day, and then they're remote for the two other days, our platform will be based on engagement four days a week plus the Wednesday remote check-in day. So I believe that will separate us from other communities where students are going home with packets on the days that they are not in hybrid, and we believe this will allow us for more coverage of the curriculum as students will be engaged four days a week, and we also believe it will allow for more engagement. So we are following three pillars: health, safety, and engagement. Those are the three pillars that will drive our hybrid plan, and we want to make sure that our students continue to be engaged, continue to be connected, while also receiving meaningful instruction whether they're in hybrid or in person. So we also want to remind everyone that whether you're in hybrid or whether you're remote, your Chromebook is your textbook. Your Chromebook will be your best friend. So there will be opportunities for paper, teaching and learning, but the Chromebook will be the device that will continue to drive our hybrid model to ensure that students in person and students remote continue to receive instruction and that we are able to cover as much curriculum as possible. So we are looking at technology to help support our teachers, which will look in the form of a tracking camera that has a built-in mic and also has a built-in speaker. And we are also looking at some touchscreens to assist our elementary school teachers who, who we realize, you know, really have to work hard to keep our elementary students engaged. We are also looking at monitors for middle school and high school to assist our middle school and high school teachers with viewing their students versus continuously looking at their Chromebook to see their students on a 14-inch screen. So these are all tools and resources that we, we believe will enhance our remote learning hybrid platform and also support our teachers to deliver this instruction to all our students, whether in person or remote. I also wanted to let you know in your packet, you should have the school committee planner for fiscal 2021. That is in there for your information, and obviously, all the meetings, the retreats, the budget presentations, the budget workshops have been included in the planner. So if, if there are any questions, we can discuss that at the next meeting in October. If there are any modifications or any adjustments that need to be made. With that, that concludes my report.
Mr. DeMello first and Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Mr. Souza. A couple of comments. First, I'd like to start off with commending the superintendent, Assistant Superintendent of Finance Monahan, and the entire team, in fact, for coming up with a $418,000 surplus. As I've publicly in the past was perplexed that we were only coming up with about $30,000, were the original numbers that were giving us. And I'm very happy to find out that we're $400,000 on the plus sign. So thank you for being fiscally responsive and for acting in, in, in good faith with all the funds that of course belong to all of us, including the taxpayers and the students. Secondly, I also want to thank not only the local delegation, which of course includes Representative Oral, Representative Haddad, Representative Doherty, Senator Pacico, and Governor Baker for that $2.2 million regarding the Chapter 70. I think it's a Herculean effort that this money is coming our way and it's coming at the right time, of course. So it goes right from our local delegation right up to Governor Baker and his executive leadership team for continuing the cause for providing public education. And lastly, if I may just say, I, I thank you for the kind words regarding the Elks, but that, all I did was facilitate a phone call. And I know we have other Elks members here, Ms. Doherty, Mr. Souza, Mr. Martin, Mr. Fiore. I don't know if Ms. Fig and Ms. Almeida or Mr. Polowski are members. If they are, I, please let me know. But we are all Elks members, and we throughout the year come together for many different causes to raise funds. And I'm just a little piece of that, and all I did was facilitate the call, but all of our memberships here deserves also a thank you. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeMello. Appreciate the comments. Mr. Polowski? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Ms. Doherty?
Mr. Polowski has a burning question. Go ahead, Mr. Polowski.
No, 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 I had the wrong, I had the wrong, I had it written down, but I said the wrong person. I'm sorry. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you very much. I, I just want to, I don't know, send kudos, accolades, whatever it is, flowery wreaths to our staff and our teachers, everybody, for the Herculean, Herculean task of going into fully remote and then merging into a hybrid model over the course of the next couple of months. It's a, I've read and reread the plan, the ins and outs and the cohorts. I still have to wrap my mind around all of that, but I'm hoping that the families and students are pretty clear about when they're supposed to show up and when they're supposed to stay home. So thank you very much for doing that. I have a couple of, a couple of questions. One is that you referenced stepping up, if you will, with the TMLP, the technology that's available. Given that everybody comes in in the morning, they're all on their computers almost at the same time, there, there are technological problems. What about the families who have hotspots where they are more inclined to, the technology really is key for families to manage with their children in terms of getting their work done? Is, is the hotspot sufficient for those families that don't have access? Or is there some way that we can provide access to the TMLP at some low cost?
We can look into that. I do, I mean, I haven't heard, and again, I can check with the IT department, but nothing's been brought to my attention that the hotspots are not working. If anything, we continue to have more requests for hotspots, especially with families who have students attending childcare facilities that have very weak Wi-Fi. They've been utilizing our hotspots. So if there are families that are, for some reason, their connection is not strong, they should contact, and again, they need to be patient too, but they should contact the, the tech support line, and somebody will get back to them as soon as possible. If we need to check with the TMLP, we can to see what they could offer. But again, I don't believe the T, the TMLP has service to the entire city for Wi-Fi. But I do believe Comcast does offer a program at a very reduced cost of $10 per family. But I believe that there are some guidelines that families have to meet in order to qualify. So if there are any concerns regarding Wi-Fi, we should, they should bring it to the tech support department or the building principal, and we'll see what we can do to try to support our families.
Yeah, thank you very much for that. I, because we're grading students and counting their absences, it's really, really critical, obviously, you know this, that they have the greatest amount of access that they can possibly get in terms of the use of the technology. The second question is messages from families that feel that they're not getting timely communication about what's happening, even though all of this information is on the website. Sometimes it's hard to find or hard to read or hard to understand. So I just want to reiterate the importance of timely communication to both students and families about where we are and where we're going. You send us all of those messages, and so they're very comprehensive. We want to make sure that our families get them in the various ways that they, whether it's email or text or we get your PSAs in the morning. I love your comb your hair, brush your teeth messages early on in the year. So we get them. I'm sure that families would appreciate that as well. And lastly, the hybrid, just a hypothetical. So we know that some families will choose to not send their children at all, even in the hybrid model where there's a lot of advocacy for getting children into school. But there are a certain number of families that aren't going to send their children. So a teacher has a class theoretically of 25 students. Some of them are in a hybrid model, which means half of the students are in, and then the other half are on remote. And then there is that portion of their classroom that are also on remote. So there's three different learning modalities. Have you yet worked it out about how that, how that works? Maybe, maybe we need a tutorial around how that works.
I'm gonna send you what I can do.
But I can see it going on.
Yeah, what I can do, Mrs. Doherty, is I will
What I can do, Mrs. Doherty, is I will send you three videos. One is personal. It's my niece, first grader, who is learning remotely and how she is being taught synchronously with her classmates in person. I will send you an elementary school video of a fourth grade classroom and I will send you all a high school classroom and how the teachers are teaching synchronously. And again, the key is being able to utilize technology. And we are investing heavily using our COVID funds, using our ESRA grant, using our tech grant to make sure that all our teachers, you know, depending on the grade level, the tools may look different. And making sure that all our teachers have the tools to be successful. So I really need to tip my hat to Mrs. Monahan in up your chairman office and also to Mrs. Blinow in her IT department. I mean, both departments are understaffed, unfortunately, but they are doing human's work. So in the near future, I will be discussing with you some efforts that we need to do to beef up the business office and some efforts that we may need to do to beef up our tech department. Because as we get deeper and deeper into this pandemic and into our school year, our IT needs are growing and also trying to run a school department. And we had to lay off or reduce a position and reduce another position. It's very difficult to maintain all our finances. So we have some creative strategies that I'd like to discuss with you in the near future on how we can bring some additional support to those two very important departments right now.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Souza. Thank you, Superintendent.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty. The superintendent's report has concluded. The chair will, unless there's any other questions, the chair will entertain a motion to accept his report.
It's all moved.
Second.
I hear a motion and a second. On a roll call vote, Mrs. Fagan.
Yep, Ms. Doherty. Yes. Mr. Polowski.
Yes.
Mr. Fiore.
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Almeida.
Yes.
Mr. DeMello.
Yes.
And Mr. Souza.
Yes. And secondly, I think that, I think it would be appropriate to send a letter of thanks on behalf of the school committee to the Titan Lodge of Elks. And a chair will entertain a motion for that as well.
All moved.
All moved. Oh, second it.
I hear a motion and a second. On a roll call vote, Mrs. Fagan.
Yep, Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
To Polowski.
Yes.
To Fiore.
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida.
Yes.
To DeMello.
Yes.
And Mr. Souza.
Yes. Moving along on the, on the agenda, we're going to go to administrative. I'm sorry, Mr. Martin.
I think you forgot, Mr. Polowski. He had his hand up when Ms. Doherty had her hand up.
Question, Mr. Polowski. I'm sorry. If I, if you had it up once, I didn't see you. I didn't see you a second time. I, I must have forgot to write it down. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, this is for, for Mr. Cabral. So I get a question that I think is probably in the minds of a lot of, of parents. If you wouldn't mind taking us through the thought process of how we've laid out the different grades that are coming back in the different weeks. You know, are our seniors not going to start back until December 7th? I know you have a reason, reason for it. If you wouldn't mind just articulating it for, for the people at home.
Yeah, to kind of just put it real simply, it's really about the transitions. We really want to make sure that we built in transition time for each group when they come into the building to transition into this new normal of teaching, to get acclimated and get acquainted with the building and the logistics. And we believe it'll be more beneficial for our staff who are working with the students, our administration in a controlled manner to work out any logistical issues, any bugs, any items that we need to as we gradually are bringing back students in a controlled manner. We also believe the transition time is very important. If we were to bring back thousands of students at one time, we believe it would not be as well done as we've learned from some other communities that rushed to bring a lot of students back. And we've noticed after several weeks of having students back in person that they've been able to iron out any issues that have occurred. So really it was about building in the transition, trying to get our new and our rising learners into the schools first so that they can be comfortable knowing that they only had six weeks, six months of schooling in the grade that they were in. So take off fourth graders, for example. Eighth graders ended middle, elementary school after only six months of instruction and now they're being asked to start a new building that they're unfamiliar with, with staff that they've only met online. So we want to give them as many opportunities to learn their new building and get familiar with their staff and with their new protocol. So again, that's, that's a majority or main reason for why we're bringing back students in the controlled manner that we are. When I'd love to bring back everybody, yes, but we also know that the grade levels where we're seeing the greatest need is at the younger levels. Unfortunately, the high school kids and the middle school kids, unfortunately, are doing a pretty good job at this. Even though we want them back, they seem to be adjusting much better to this remote or to this remote plan than our, than our younger students. And again, they're older, they're more mature. They have more, they've had more familiarity using Chromebooks and computers. So that, that makes sense. And the growing pains that our elementary school kids are going through now are the growing pains that our middle school students ran through last year when we were in remote. So this is really the first time that our elementary school students have had access to the Chromebooks. And I know it's hard for parents to hear this, but in the event that we do have to go full remote, you know, we've provided our elementary school students with plenty of time to become familiar with how, with how this will take place remotely. And it also will provide us, I believe, with a better flow and a better system when we're in hybrid. Because we're going to be working with students in remote or working with students in person. Sorry, long answer, but I hope that answers your question.
I appreciate it. It requires a long answer. So yeah, I appreciate that. And then one last question. So I just, if you could speak towards what are we doing for the, the kids that are having a particularly hard time with remote learning? So you know, as, as you said, for, for the most part, for the older kids, they're able to handle it well. But that's not the case for absolutely everybody. There, there's certain exceptions. So what are we doing to reach out to those specific cases that are having a particularly hard time?
Yeah. So when, if I receive an email regarding a special needs student, a special needs family, I refer it to the Special Education Department, to either Mrs. Monahan, Ms. Mullin, and they reach out to the family or ask them to reach out to the family and talk about accommodations, or to offer suggestions. Or regular education students, we start with the building principal and then the building principal will work with the family or refer to guidance to offer some suggestions as well. I think what we need to be mindful of is accommodations can be made while students are learning remotely. Not always easy. They are challenging. But families that do have concerns, we do try to work with our families in office suggestions and make, and ask our teachers to make accommodations because we don't want to lose our kids. And whether we're in hybrid or whether we're remote, there's going to be some form of online learning. So we need to make sure that we continue to provide our families with as much support as we can when possible. So I'm still working with Bridgewater State University. They're still working with us to provide tutors. That may be an opportunity for some support. In some families, we have made arrangements to provide them with additional support. So again, you know, there's no perfect answer. I wish I had a magic wand to say that remote learning would be just like being in person. I think what I've come to realize, and I think all of you have realized, that this is going to be a year like no other. It's going to be filled with peaks. It's going to be filled with valleys and we're not going to get too high. We're not going to get too low. We're going to continue to adapt, improvise and do what's best for our kids and our families, knowing that it's never going to be perfect, but it's going to be the best. We're going to do what we believe is best for all, all our kids.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Polowski.
Mr. Souza.
Mr. Martin.
I just want to follow up on something Mr. Cabral just said. Are you looking for tutors from BSU? Is there any, anything? I've got two classes of elementary math students. That's their major, obviously. Elementary Ed, taking math with me. You've mentioned tutors. Are we talking about paying these positions or these volunteers? Or I would just like to share with the classes, you know, what the conditions are.
Yeah, actually, Mr. Martin, what I'll do is I'll be happy to send, send you the contacts or contacts of the people I'm working with at Bridgewater State University. It's mostly coming out of the Education Department, the new dean, Dr., I believe it's Dr. Is it Hope is the new dean in the Education Department, but if not, I will send you his contact information. I believe they were putting a posting together to have students apply and that they were going to screen the students. As I've met with them several times, we've talked about certain criteria that we're looking for in tutors who want to work or interested in working with our students that Bridgewater State would provide to us. And I believe we were hoping to start with 10, but there may be an opportunity to add more.
Well, I got a total of 50 in two classes.
Yeah. Yeah. So it's, it's work that's going to be ongoing. And again, if it provides some sort of support and relief to families, then it's well worth it.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Any other questions? We'll move on to administrative business staffing report.
She didn't place on file.
Okay.
On a roll call vote, Mrs. Fagan, please.
Yep, Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Mr. Polowski.
Yes.
Mr. Fiore.
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida.
Yes.
Mr. DeMello.
Yes.
And Chairman Souza.
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Fagan. And the next item on the administrative business is the Reed's Quarterly Report. And that's the annual report from Reed's Collaborative. Mr. Cabral, do you have anything to say on that?
No, it was just in your packet for, as information.
She didn't place on file.
Second.
A motion has been made to receive and placed on file and seconded. On the roll call vote, Mrs. Fagan.
Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Polowski.
Yes.
Mr. Fiore.
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida.
Yes.
Mr. DeMello.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman Souza.
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Fagan. The next item on the agenda is the Subcommittee Reports. The first one is Finance and Law Subcommittee. Mr. Martin.
Finance and Law Subcommittee made earlier this evening with myself, Mr. Fiore, Mr. Souza, and also in attendance were Superintendent Cabral and Assistant Superintendent Monahan. First item on the agenda was bills payable. We had two, one for FY20 in the amount of $960. And for FY21, it was $854,318.57. And that motion, there was a motion made and that bills payable was approved by the Finance and Law Subcommittee. Second item was a budget update. We got an update on the FY21 quarter one report from Ms. Monahan. Several questions were asked and I believe everyone was satisfied with the answers. We're pretty much right where we should be, even though some of the figures are a lower one area and higher in another area. Obviously, it's not a normal school year. The second item on the budget update was the revolving quarter one. And as Mr. Cabral mentioned, our total balance for the revolving accounts as it stands right now is 300, yeah, 300, $3,885,501.17. And the only item I want to bring up is Ms. Monahan pointed out that under school choice, we expended $264,000 and change for PPE and things like that. And all of that has been submitted to the city through its reimbursement process with the federal government. So we may be getting a good portion, if not all of that money back. And the only comment I made on that was just to watch for it because it'll probably come as one transfer to the city. So we should make sure we get our, what's coming to us. And then the last piece was, under budget update was the grants for quarter one. And a total right now is $10,915,002. The FY21 grants totaled just over nine and a half, just under nine and a half million. And the carryover grants, which must be expended in FY20, $1,491,000. And Ms. Monahan was asked several questions about that and answered everything to committee satisfaction. The last item on the agenda, I'm looking around to see if anyone has any questions, was a facilities update and we want to give a thank you to Bruce Thomas through, hit one of his Dunkin' Donuts. Today was National Custodians Day and he made and distributed 50 bacon and egg cheese sandwiches to our custodians and also a five dollar gift card. So again, we'd like to send, and I think maybe as part of, we didn't, this didn't come up in finance and law, but I think we should send him a thank you for his generous, generous offer to our custodians. Also, principals are preparing the buildings for hybrid learning, you know, one way stairways and things like that. They're getting ready for in-person students actually being in the building. And finally, the Taunton area, Taunton, it's not the area, Taunton Alternative High School roof is nearing completion and that'll be done in a very short period of time if it's not already done. And that's the report of the Finance and Law Subcommittee.
Mr. DeMello.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two questions through either Ms. Monahan or through the superintendent. On the warrant, page 14, the item that comes up as Bank of Utah arbitrary trust account for $25,000. Could you please let me know what that's about?
I can, I can take that one quickly, Brenda, as I remember that from my financial. Well, that's arbiter pay and that is the vendor that we use to pay for athletic officials. So what we do there, Mr. DeMello, is similar to postage meter. We deposit an amount of money, we draw down on it and whatever's not used gets carried over to the following season.
Okay, because I don't remember seeing that in the past. That's why I questioned it. And is there any, ever been excess or do we have, we have to supplement it?
No, usually Mr. Otto Viannelli is pretty good at budgeting for athletic officials. So he usually budgets the velocity rate to make sure that there's enough in there to cover it. But yeah, we, I don't believe we've ever had to deposit more money. I think we've always had a little bit of a surplus by the end of the season.
Right. And the, and the second question by me, Mr. Chairman, on the quarterly financial report on the account number 2120, department heads, there's an appropriation for $456,000 and change and nothing's expended. What are the, what are the department heads?
I'll let Mrs. Monahan take that one.
You're muted.
Sorry about that. I apologize. Department heads for 2120, I don't have the exact description of it from the account close, but what I, I do not know why there is zero expended, but I will look into that, Mr. DeMello, and get back to you.
Okay. So normally we should have something in that column as expended, correct? By this time.
Yeah, I would, I would think what's probably happening is they're probably being charged to the teacher line versus being charged, they're probably being charged to the teacher salary line or they might be being charged to another admin line. So that's probably something that Mrs.
And if I could, Mr. Cabral too. Yeah, I met with our payroll supervisor and our head bookkeeper, Mrs. Raphael. And, and what we ended up looking at was we went to see if we were charging the correct accounts. And there were a few that had to be adjusted. So I am sure that you will see in the next quarter update, everything will be reflected correctly, but both of them are working and taking care of that right now.
Thank you. And last comment, Mr. Chairman, I need to respectfully ask my colleagues that I vote present on voucher number 14479 in the amount of $4,158. And that's on page number four of the warrant.
I think we need a motion to accept the report and adopt the recommendations.
Sorry, no motion yet. Sorry.
A motion.
Yep, we'll get to that in a second. Ms. Ms. Monahan, thank you, Mr. DeMello. Ms. Monahan, if you could just in a, in a brief, obviously, we, the quarterly report will not be next week, but if the next meeting, if you could just give us a quick summary of what, on that particular line item that Mr. DeMello asked for, that would be, that would be helpful. Thank you. The chair will entertain a motion to accept the report and adopt the recommendations of the Finance and Law Subcommittee. Ms. Doherty.
Just a question. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. A question about whether or not, and I think this was brought up previously, we could have a list of where our CARES COVID-19 funds have gone, what, what they, how much in each. where our CARES COVID-19 funds have gone, what, what they, how much in each area? I know it's technology and other kinds of things, but it would be interesting to see how much of, how much money CARES funds and where those have been directed. Just a request.
Mr. Cabral, you think we could have that for the next meeting?
Actually, I think we can, Mrs. Moynihan and I can work and get that to Mrs. Doherty.
Oh, get that to the whole committee?
All of them, yeah.
That, so that was a form of a motion?
No, I don't think it necessarily needs to have a motion. I just think we need to get it, this, we just need to get it done.
Thank you, Mr. Suza.
I don't think we need to vote on these different, we just, yeah, if we can get where the CARES Act was, the, the distribution of the CARES Act so far, that would be great. And I don't think we need a motion on that. So again, the chair will entertain a motion to accept the report and adopt the recommendations of the Finance and Law Subcommittee.
Go move.
Second.
A hit, a motion and a second.
Include, Mr., does that, that motion include Mr. DeMello's request to vote present on the line item that he mentioned?
Yes.
I can repeat that. It's voucher number 14479 in the amount of $4,158.
Wendy, did you get that? Just shake your head. Thank you. Okay, I think we're all good. On a roll call vote, where are you? Mrs. Fagan.
Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Mr. Pulaski.
Vote present on item number 15057.
Okay.
Other than that, you're good.
Okay. Mr. Fiore.
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida.
Yes.
Mr. DeMello.
Yes.
And Mr. Suza.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. The next item on the Subcommittee Reports is the Unit A Subcommittee, the Teacher Subcommittee. And that is myself and myself, Mrs. Fagan and Mrs. Almeida have a meeting with, with the administration, with Mr. Cabral and Attorney Mitchell is our standard team. And then we have other members of the leadership team that come in as needed. And we met on, Wendy, just update these dates. That's 9/24, 9/29, 10/1, and 10/6. And right now, the hybrid learning plan model is being discussed and negotiations are ongoing.
Motion to accept the report.
Do I hear a second? I hear a second. On the motion, Mrs. Fagan, a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Mr. Pulaski.
Yes.
Mr. Fiore.
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin.
Yes, yes.
Mrs. Almeida.
Yes.
Mr. DeMello.
Yes.
And Mr. Suza.
Yes. The next item on the Subcommittee Reports is the Unit B Administrative Subcommittee, and the chair on that is Mr. Fiore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that was left on from the last meeting. We have not had a meeting since then. We reached a tentative agreement and right now we're just waiting to have it in written form so it can be submitted for votes and for signing.
Excellent. Will the, will the body accept the report and, and accept the report?
Go move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
On the motion, Mrs. Fagan, please call the roll.
Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Mr. Pulaski.
Yes.
Mr. Fiore.
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida.
Yes.
Mr. DeMello.
Yes.
And Chairman Suza.
Yes. Thank you, everyone. The next item on the agenda is new business. And item number one is superintendent's evaluation. In your packet, everyone should have received the letter that I laid out for the evaluation of the superintendent, a copy of the the actual evaluation tool. And we will be doing that as it states. I don't know if I have to read the whole thing, but we'll be doing that. We'll be discussing it first. I know, I'll read the first paragraph. On Wednesday, November the 4th, 2020, we'll be discussing the process for the 2019-2020 evaluation. So this is FY20. So that's from July 1 of 2019 to June 30, 2020 of the superintendent of schools, which is being conducted via televised Taunton School Committee Meeting on November the 18th. As you know, under the Mass General Law, the superintendent is the only public employee required to be evaluated in the open session. And I provided you with a copy of the evaluation tool with the six categories. Relationship with the school committee, instructional leadership, management and operations, budget management, professional culture, family and community partnership. Please be advised that you do not need to complete the, I won't go into this because I'm going to discuss the same thing on November the 4th. So we'll discuss it on November the 4th and we'll evaluate on November the 18th. So I won't go into it. If there's any side questions, please contact me if there's any questions and we can go from there. Mrs. Almeida. Are you, you're muted?
I'm sorry. Thank you. Will we have the superintendent's self-evaluation before we evaluate?
Yes. So you're going to have the superintendent's evaluation on November the 4th. When we discuss, when we have the general discussion on, when I just go over this paperwork that we have here. And then we'll do the evaluation on the 18th. So you'll have it for two weeks. To review it yourself.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Moving on, any other questions, Ms. Doherty? Okay, any other new business? I'm going to move on from this. New, new business?
Question. No question on the evaluation.
Yes, Ms. Doherty, I'm sorry.
So, so we basically missed August and September and October in terms of the evaluation process. So is the chair prepared to instruct us on what we do without the information that we would have gotten in that period of time? I know we're getting the superintendent's reflection document on November 4th and then we'll consider it subsequently. But are we waiving those two steps? We had a long discussion a couple of years ago about what this process would look like. And these are peculiar times, so one understands, but.
I think the I think self-evaluation will encompass those components. I'll ask the superintendent to encompass those components, but I don't see anything that would, would be too much different. It's just that we'll just add, make sure that he has his full year's worth of components in there for his self-evaluation. And then, of course, our, what we have, what we have done over the year.
So, and just finally, one assumes that in October, we're supposed to hear. So the superintendent will present in November, I guess, how his goals align with the district strategic plan. So we're assuming the current strategic plan because we have not, given the superintendent was new and then things began to kind of unravel during COVID. We have yet, we don't have a new strategic plan for a variety of reasons. So I guess through you to the superintendent, is that your intention to align your goals to the old strategic plan?
So my
we're in a lot, we're in the weeds here, so it's tricky.
So my, so my, my goals, if you, if you remember, and I can share the document. My goals were created based on my entry work that was going to formulate the strategic plan. So my goals probably will tie more to the strategic plan that is being, that is still being worked on. So I apologize to the, to what I found to be the needs when I met with all of you. When I met with the constituents in the community and met with our principals. So that's what drove my goals was based on that feedback. So in analyzing the current strategic plan, a lot of it still applies. But there are some things that will look different because it is, what, 12 years old now? So there will be some things that'll look different. And obviously, I mean, just look at our torch. We've evolved to add equity. You know, so again, I, I believe that there may be some things that look similar, but based on my entry work, our strategic plan will look different.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Cabral.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty. Any other new business? Okay, moving along to unfinished business and action item updates. Any unfinished business? And then we'll move to the action items. Any unfinished business? Any action, any movement on the action items? I, I, right now I don't see any, but all right. I'm sorry, Ms. Doherty.
Yeah, not on the action items. I just have a couple of follow-up questions from previous discussion. Tell me when that's appropriate. Can't hear you, Mr. Suza.
Sorry, I put it on mute before I told you what's going on. I think that's where unfinished business. I think this would be a good time right now.
Okay, so I'm interested in an update, Mr. Cabral, on the HVAC analysis evaluation of the airflow in our buildings. What is the status of that? Are we replacing filters? The windows open? Okay. Given that our students are coming in now, that's even more important than, well, it's as equally important.
Actually, Mrs. Doherty, what I'll do is for our next meeting, I'll put all the reports in, in the packet. And then I, Mrs. Moynihan and I can have a discussion about the work that has been, that has been ongoing by the school department in collaboration with the building department as well. So we can provide you with an update the next meeting.
Great, thank you. My second question is I raised the issue of providing transportation to students who might want to play the four sports. Mr., I think Mr. Ottavianoelli said he'd look into if all students who want to participate are able to do so, given that they might not have transportation.
So I'll ask Mr. Barata if you could follow up for us, Mr. Barata, with Mr. Ottavianoelli for an update on athletic participation for the four sports that we are running now. Again, we're running cross-country, field hockey, soccer, and golf. So we'll see if the participation numbers are relatively the same as last year or less. And I'll ask Mr. Ottavianoelli if he's received any concerns or any questions regarding students who did not participate because of lack of transportation.
Thank you, Mr. Suza. Thank you, Mr. Cabral.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty. Any other unfinished business? The action items, we're all set with them. I think that they're, we'll move on to critical items, not necessarily, excuse me. Critical items that reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance. I don't see any press time. I don't see any press time. Oh, Ms. Doherty, before we, before we
Truly, my last question.
Go ahead.
Just looking at the the class size report, the enrollments. Thank you. And I noticed that there are a few of the kindergartens that are very large. I know that this is the first report of the quarter. So what are you anticipating in terms of numbers? Do you think they'll grow or are these the end numbers? And with large class sizes in the kindergarten particularly, is there a strategy? I'm looking at Chamberlain, for example, a kindergarten 27, 25, first grade in Chamberlain, 25, 24. So are you thinking those will diminish or grow? Or do we have a plan for, do we have a plan? It's a lot for those little guys, especially remote.
No, it is. I'm sorry, yes, it is. So actually, what we, what we've been noticing is that our preschool and our kindergarten numbers are lower than they were, they were, I believe, the previous year. So I think what we're going to see. Yeah. So if you look at our, if you look on the last page, you'll notice the elementary.
Yeah.
We're down about 80 students overall in the elementary. And you notice our preschool numbers are down about 140, little over 140 students. So I think what you're going to see at the younger levels, you're going to see a decrease in enrollment. And I think that's because of the nature of the hybrid and also because of the remote. If you look at, if you notice our middle school numbers are up and you notice our high school numbers are up. But we also know that the NASDAQ reports for enrollment, the MSBA reports for enrollment, they were projecting that our enrollment would flatline and trend down. So if we do need to add additional staff because we're creeping up on the contractual limit, we'll add additional staff. But as of now, these are the numbers. And when you look at some of these high class sizes, too, you need to take into account that there are some special education students in the room. And there are some special education students that are non-academics, and that also contributes to the larger class sizes. So sometimes those students do, you know, do come and go. And there is additional staff in those rooms or on the remote to support those students as well. So it may look like it's 27 to one, but it may be 27 with two teachers or an assistant in the room.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Suza, Mr. Cabral.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty. Good question. Press time. The chair wants to have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We're, I heard a second. On the motion to adjourn, Mrs. Fagan, please call the roll.
Yep. Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Mr. Pulaski.
Yes.
Mr. Fiore.
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida.
Yes.
Mr. DeMello.
Yes.
And Chairman Suza.
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Have a great week. Stay safe, please.
Great night.
Good night, all. Good night.